Good evening, everyone. I think we got 7:00 PM. So I will call the Select Board meeting for December 17th of 2018. Order on the consent agenda. We have the town accounting warrants. We have minutes. Gift acceptance, Concord, Carlisle Community Chest, $16,266 to community service coordinator gift account. Concord, Carlisle, Community Chest, $8,500 to school resource officer gift account. We have a proclamation for Verrel Farm recognition. Whereas Verrel Farm began in Concord as Amy and Floyd Verrel started dairy farm with Curry cows. Whereas today, 100 years and two generations later, Verrel Farm is a thriving business that now comprises over 100 acres of farmland and 100 acres of woodlands. And whereas the 200 acres have been placed under an agricultural preservation restriction, ensuring that the land will be permanently preserved for agriculture. And whereas the Verrels are farmers, bakers, stewards of the land, entrepreneurs, and committed Concord citizens. And whereas the family farm has withstood flood, drought, and fire to provide the town with local produce, baked goods, specialty foods, prepared food, and flowers, not to mention the indispensable role they play in providing turkeys and pies at Thanksgiving. And whereas they host a variety of events throughout the year in support of agriculture, community groups, and the opportunity for us all to pick our own strawberries, pumpkins, and flowers. Now therefore, we as a select board of the town of Concord, Massachusetts, recognize Verrel Farm as a community treasure. Their mission states in state, they will nourish the body and soul of their customers by providing healthful food of superb flavor and surroundings of beauty. They have accomplished their mission and we are confident they will continue to do so. We congratulate the thanks Verrel Farm for 100 years of service to the town and our neighbors, given under our hand this 17th day of December 2018, Concord Select Board. We also then have one day special licenses. 51 Walden, Inc., on January 12th from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, 51 Walden Street, Wine and Malt. A census government savings on January 7th, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt. And Saltbox Farm, January 19th, January 26th, February 14th, February 15th, February 16th, February 23rd, March 15th, and March 16th, 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt.
Move to approve the consent agenda is read. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we want to review and approve the executive session minutes. Minutes have been sent out to everybody, I believe. The executive session minutes include October 31st of 2018, January 23rd of 2017, number 1, 2, and 3, May 22nd, 2017, number 1 and 2, October 16th, 2017, 1 and 2, December 7th to December 11th, 2017.
Move to approve the executive session minutes to be released.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're now ready for the town managers report. One more. Oh. I'm sorry. Move to approve the May 21st, 2018 to be released.
Move to approve the executive session minutes to be released, May 21st, 2018. Second.
All in favor? Aye. We even have another one not to be released.
I move to approve the executive session minutes not to be released, January 22nd, 2018. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reminder to all that the town offices will be closed both Monday and Tuesday, December 24th and December 25th after the Christmas holiday. Offices will be open on Monday, December 31st but closed on Tuesday, the 30th. The Mass Municipal Association award conquered the recognition for the best webpage for a community of our size, which thanks go to American Public Information Officer Erin Stevens, Assistant Town Manager Kate Hodges, and all the town departments and committees for keeping the pages current and interesting. The Biennials Citizen Survey performed by the Finance Department is now complete and 30-page report is available online on the Finance Department page. 1,700 residents responded to the survey, giving their opinion about town services. Overall, the response was very favorable, I think. And that study, that survey has been conducted since 2008 every other year, so there's five reports available. Building Commissioner Lori LaRolle, once again, and her last day is on December 26th. Local Inspector Ray Matty has agreed to serve as interim building commissioner while we conduct the search. We will conduct a search, probably posting the notice sometime after the first of the year. The Public Works Department requested proposals from traffic engineers to study the turning movements, no left turns, different turning movements that have been requested by different neighborhoods in response to some cut-through traffic that has been going on. The low bidder was Jacob's Engineering Group of Boston. So the town engineer and Public Works Director will be talking to the consultant to determine what their scope of services will be and if agreeable contract will be signed. And work will begin again probably after the first of the year. The contents of the Giraud House are, will be gifted. Some of the departments have taken some of the items that were in the Giraud House on Commonwealth Avenue. The rest will be donated to Home Goods and Acton to support folks who need furniture and equipment for their homes. And the house should be empty by next week. And the Public Works Department and Rod Robinson will assist in recycling and removing the building sometime in the month of January, working on getting a contractor to do that work. So it is expected that the house will be removed from its current location sometime in January. The Sustainability Director Kate Hanley reports that $116,000 in Green Communities grant that we received last year has been fully expended once LED lighting is installed in the last few buildings. That would, as expenditure of those funds, that makes us eligible for a second round of funding this coming spring. Hopefully we get similar amount of money. And the Board of Appeals approved some changes to the Concord Park assisted living in West Concord, creating another 11 units, and also conversion of the Holy Family Rectory in Monument Square here, converting it from a rectory to office use by the church. And lastly, the town's IT department and Media, Minute Man Media Network has wired Ripley School with fiber optic cables so that the school can be, meetings can be broadcast live. They've been taped all this time, so we have a short mission to drive.
I should have announced at the beginning that this meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast by Minute Man Media Network. Thanks. At our last meeting, Chris announced that the town had been notified that our comprehensive plan had been chosen to receive the Comprehensive Planning Award, which was given on December 14th at Tufts University. Now having received the information that we've gotten the Mass Municipal Association award for the best town website, I think we all should be extremely proud of the high standards that the town activities achieved. And while we all strive to do better, we should be grateful for the work that is done on behalf of the town. At the Chair's Breakfast this Wednesday, the consultant for the Town Manager Search Committee will be attending and beginning the reaching out to the town for the process of determining appropriate types of candidate. Committee's up and running, running at full speed. I want to thank Mike and Alice for the good work thus far. Lyndon and I met with Chris regarding the P3 process, and we will be holding a meeting open to the public sometime in January before the posting of P3 activities on the website. I want to give a shout-out to the town crier, Stephen Ng, who received a prominent display in the Boston Globe celebrating the arrival of the 400-pound wheel of Kupolo cheese during the annual cheese parade. And lastly, the Select Board decision to suspend meter parking on Saturdays until after New Year's has resulted in a couple of favorable emails, and downtown Concord certainly looks beautiful this time of year. So with that, we are ready for our 7:10 public hearing.
Move to approve the public hearing. Second.
And this is the public hearing to consider the acceptance of the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, establishment of 25 mile-per-hour speed limit in thickly settled areas of business districts in your town, approved under Article 29 from the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. We have a motion and a second, I believe. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rich Rain, Public Works Director. I'm joined by Chris Hall, Town Engineer. And as you say, this is for the acceptance of MGL, Chapter 90, Section 17C. It's the final administrative, you can go to the next slide, please. Do I have it figured? Okay, sorry. This is the final administrative step in establishing the 25 mile-per-hour speed limits in the thickly settled classifications, what they call it for Concord. As this slide indicates, the enabling legislation was established to allow towns to opt-in for this 25 mile-per-hour speed limit in thickly settled areas within town. It can be done on a street-by-street basis or it can be done town-wide. Mass DOT really prefers to go the town-wide approach rather than have a confusing situation street-by-street, so that is what we've done. As noted during town meeting, the adoption of the MGL does not affect the previously adopted speed, special speed regulations, which will supersede the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. We'll get to a map that shows that in a second. On April 11th, 2018, town meeting voted to accept this MGL, and we're at the point right now where we vote through this public hearing process to put it in place. So this slide shows the map of the existing special speed regulations. And just to describe that very briefly, a special speed regulation is a regulation which is adopted through an MGL that requires an engineering study. And the engineering study, in short, determines what the 85th percentile speed is on that roadway, and it is then adopted at the nearest 5 mile-per-hour speed, around it up. So you'll see the town has several of these special speed regulations throughout town, ranging in speeds, you know, from 35, 40, you know, miles an hour, 25 mile-per-hour in some areas also. And those won't be changed by this, the adoption of this MGL. This next slide provides a graphic of where the proposed new 25 mile-per-hour speed limit science will be installed. Mass DOT once again provides guidance in that area, and they indicate that they should be placed at the municipal boundaries using a specified sign type to remain in compliance with MUTCD, which is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. They require a specific sign, MAR29B, and that is a standard that all towns who adopt this or cities use a 9A would, would use that same configuration and size. So what we propose is to put 33 signs out at these locations identified on this map. You can see at the town boundaries, they're shown in red. And we're also proposing to put these at the intersections where Route 2 comes off into some of these roads because people may not have the opportunity to see a town boundary sign. So that's a total of 33 signs. And then this, this final slide just indicates that there's some other towns that have done this nearby. You can see our neighbors Lexington, Bedford, Arlington, Belmont, Cambridge have done this. We, we've been in contact with some of these towns. I was in contact with the Assistant Chief of Police in Belmont today, and he, just to determine if he had any words of wisdom that we want to put in place ourselves. And he thought that the implementation was very smooth. He did not see any issues with their implementation and felt that the only potential confusion would be a, a special speed regulation having a sign of 40 miles an hour or 35 miles an hour conflicting with this 25. But like I said, those signs are not coming down. Those will remain in place. And over time, you know, this gentleman indicated that people understood and got used to it pretty quickly. And that's, that's all I have for the presentation unless there's any questions.
Enforcement of the general law, did the Assistant Chief in Belmont give you any indication as to how that was going?
Yeah, he actually indicated that they, they were having a, a pretty good implementation period with enforcement, too. I think the indication was at first, it was more of an educational effort, letting people understand that there is a, a new thickly settled regulation. He didn't indicate by number or how many citations that he's written, but he didn't appear to indicate to me that it was a problem.
Who else?
I just, I have a, yeah. Rich, I'm, I'm just curious, since there are existing signs in town for 30, 40, et cetera, was any thought given to perhaps adding a sign at the rotaries or at the junction like in West Concord and at the rotary in town center?
So, yeah, so we will be putting signs. Let me just make sure I understand your, your question. Are we considering putting signs when you exit the rotary or exit Ornac, for example, or Main Street so people understand that the new site? Yeah, that's exactly, if I can just go back, if I could figure this out. So the red signs are the signs that we're going to be putting at the town boundaries. That's about 19 signs. And then we'll be putting the blue signs, which are 14 signs, and those are at roads intersecting with Route 2. So exactly what you said, we'll have a sign on Com Ave, for example. Yeah, no, no problem. There's a lot of information there. Thank you.
You have any public comments? No, I guess we are ready to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any further discussion or are we ready to move on?
It's nice to see us moving this forward.
Yes.
In the counter years.
Nothing is simple to try to get these things done, but they require doing it the correct way, so.
And I'm sorry, Rich, did you say when you thought the signs would go up?
I did not say, yeah, we will, we've already planned for that. We've talked to the, the fabricating vendor who will fabricate these, which are probably a two-to-three-week lead time. If weather permits, sometimes when we start getting thick frost in the ground, that we could have a problem in actually driving the post into the ground. But if weather permits, as soon as they're available, we'll make it a priority to get those out there. So we hope, you know, they'll be sometime over the next month, month and a half. If not, and we can't, we can't get them in the ground because the frost will wait till the spring, as soon as we can. Thanks, Chris.
All right, so I'm ready to make a look if you're ready. So I move to adopt Section 17C of Chapter 90 of Massachusetts General Laws, which allows the Select Board in the interest of public safety and without further authority to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district, district in the town, so it is not a state highway. Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Now we can wear a different cap.
I will wear a different cap. So just a few things to report. Cambridge Turnpike, you know, happy to report that that project is moving ahead very well. Our contractor, Jay Trupiano, has essentially Phase 1, which is from Lexington Road to the farm stand. That's Section 1 of Phase 1. And Section 2 is from Hawthorne Drive to Sandy Pond. They've installed the water main in that Section 1, Phase 1, Section 1. And they have a couple services and one fire service that they have to install. That's going to happen this week. And we'll allow them to move into drainage work and catch basins, take the drain pipe in that area, weather permitting. We'll be receiving Phase 2 bids. Phase 2 now is the ground improvement work. That's the area between Millbrook Farm, Hawthorne, and then continuing again by the Crosby's Dam. A lot of that work is structural work, so retaining walls. There's a bridge carrying the roadway over the Millbrook Farm at the farm, Millbrook over the farm. And there's also large culverts and, and ground improvement work. If you recall, that whole area was constructed on about 70 feet of compressible soils, a lot of peat, a lot of, a lot of muck, and that's why the road continues to sink. So they'll be using a, a technique called aggregate kiers or piers or bi-modulus columns to drill into the roadway and that supports the road. That Phase 2 bid is coming in on Wednesday of this week, and we hope to be able to award that very quickly and allow them to go into their design of those piers and then mobilizing shortly thereafter. One thing I will just notify the, the board is we will probably have road closures, daily road closures on the, on the section of Phase 1 that they're working on right now, opening up in the evening. But then shortly after that, once the Phase 2 work is mobilized, we'll be closing the road permanently because they'll be obviously drilling into the roadway. It'll be different elevations. And when I say closing the road for a section of area where they're working, so you'll be able to access it from Lexington Road to a certain point and access it also from the Route 2 Crosby's Corner area, but it will have impacts on traffic. We'll have a lot of notification, you know, to the public before that happens. But that's been something that we have talked about for quite some time.
Emergency vehicles will be able.
Emergency vehicles will always be able to get through. We've made accommodations for, for them in the contract and with our traffic management plan that the contractor has to submit to us.
And this is for next spring?
No, no, I think that's going to happen as soon as January for daily road closures. And shortly after that, the larger road closure when the Phase 2 work gets underway.
And a, a full closure of the road during construction could, could extend a period of months, is that correct?
That's right, Chris.
That the, the area over the Millbrook, there's no, can't be, can't come make cars during construction, so it's going to have to be closed.
How's truck are going to be routed, Rich?
So the detour route is, we have a detour route that has been established, both with the contractor as well as the police department, having several conversations with them. And this is a discussion that we've had at all of our meetings. The detour route is coming off of Route 2 at Walden Street, coming down Walden and coming, taking a right at Haywood and getting back onto Lexington Road. That way inbound and outbound would be coming up the Lexington Road to 2A, taking a right at that location where it meets, where it meets 2A, and then continuing on to Route 2 Crosby's Corner from there.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What happened, I can't recall, you probably do. What happened with National Grid? Were they able to do the gas signs?
No, no.
Or were stuck in the?
It's still, we're still in a somewhat precarious position, although our contract, our contract language in both cases protects the town and puts a significant amount of coordination on the contractors themselves. This is a very unusual situation with a lockout of a major utility. But we hope that by the time that work needs to take place, it'll be spring or at least late winter, and that lockout will be resolved. That's what we've heard from some of the representatives at National Grid, that they're talking, they're having discussions, but no promise on when that's going to happen. But it's not, it's on critical path, but it's not at that point right now where we have a real issue with that not being installed.
So knowing that we don't need that till the spring gives me some comfort. The project at Minute Tech has been problematic. Near the gas lines now.
Yeah, we have several other utilities that will be installed before the, before the gas line goes in, and we would rather have the gas line working around our utilities than us working around them. So we still have some breathing room, but it's, the oxygen is getting a little thin. Just another thing to report, you know, we have a, a lot of, a lot of really good fronts on the public shade tree and for, urban forest front. It's been about a year since we've done our townwide inventory and evaluation of all our public shade trees in the right-of-way and sub-public areas. And that tool is just so immensely helpful for us to be able to plan all of our work and really manage our urban forest in a, in a systematic way. We've enhanced our, our public shade tree setback planting program. I'm not sure if the, if the board saw this, this document that we sent out to the people who registered for the setback trees. And it was really some, it was much more, I think, systematic where people had an understanding of what trees we were being off, we were offering, when the fall planting trees were going to take place. We've planted probably, or coordinated the plant, about 52 trees, both in the public right-of-way as well as setback trees. Some of those have been planted in the fall. We had, if you recall, we had a very early cold spell this fall, so we didn't want to risk the survival of those trees. So some we've pushed off into the spring, but we'll be hitting that again. I'm also working with Kate Hanley, our Sustainability Director, to put together a municipal vulnerability grant where we may be able to get some money for a reforestation program in town. I think, you know, it's a, it's a nature-based solution. I think it's something that will be readily, you know, accepted and probably fairly favorably reviewed. It's something that, we know that the trees provide a real benefit in climate change and carbon sequestration, so we're hopeful that that will, that'll be successful. The other issue we have, you may have heard that Lexington had detected a Emerald Ash Bore last year. It's within 15 miles, obviously, of Concord. And when that's the case, we're considered highly vulnerable to that pest infestation. So we've been working with, with our consultant to come up with a plan to address that. We have about 260 dead or soon-to-be-dead ash trees out there. They serve as a real attractant for the Emerald Ash Bore, so we'll be removing those. And the balance of the trees that we have, which are good, are fair, are 311 in the public right-of-way and in public property. And we'll be coming up with a plan to, to treat those with a repellent for the Emerald Ash Bore. There's several kind that are available. I won't go through the names because I probably couldn't pronounce them, but I'll try. One is Amamectin Benzoide, and that is something that is a neonicotinoid, as well as a midocloprid, which both of those are, have impacts potentially for pollinators. We're staying away from those and we're going with a organic type of treatment. It's, it's actually a treatment from the neem tree. That's an extract from the seed that has very good results also. We'll have some public information meetings. We had one already at the Public Works Commission. We'll have another one, just to inform people of what we're doing on public property and what they can do to protect their own ash trees, because I think it's just a matter of time before the Emerald.
We haven't detected the.
We have not, but the, the indication is when it's this close, it's probably here.
And do we have any sense of how large, we know how many ash trees we have on public lands. Do we have any percentage sense of how many ash trees exist?
We don't, we don't. We didn't inventory the private property, but that's why we'll be having a public information session, giving people advice on how they can protect their ash trees. They can do it with different types of treatments that have a, a very favorable result in protecting their trees, and we want to get that information out for them because, you know, the, the more trees that we can protect, the better off our public assets are also. So that's a, that's a big piece. And then lastly, the project that we've been working with the, the Select Board on with the punkettastic parking is, is substantially complete. We, our Public Works crews did an exceptional job in, in moving the stone wall to the edge of right-of-way. We ended up getting that five to six spaces that we've talked about. We essentially have six spaces there right now that are safe, that the parking width, stall width is adequate, so you can actually park and get out on either side protected. And the only thing that remains on that is the installation of the no parking signs that will be coming back to the board at some point in the future and having that adopted as well. So we'll have a no parking sign at that far south spot, and then we'll have some parking signs in the areas beyond that space six going north toward Carlisle to that first driveway. But that, that's complete.
It looks nice.
Thank you. And that's all I have unless there's questions.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. A lot's going on in the polls.
Yes, thank you.
The Walden Woods Project update on the landfill conservation description.
I have on the table that was just delivered tonight as part of, I think, the, the October 29 correspondence the board received from Kathy Anderson, Walden Woods Project, subject of discussion.
I attended the Public Works here. I attended, uh, the Public Works hearing, uh, last week, and, uh, Public Works, um, were unanimous in their opposition and pointed out, and I'll just read what the, um, long-range plan is. The town's Walden Street landfill is an invaluable asset to the community, providing a location for many activities such as winter snow storage, management of bulky materials and storm debris, recycling, composting and brush management, storage of equipment, and a fire training site. Due to its location, topography and configuration, it can serve as a twenty-four-seven operational site while having minimal impact to residents. While acknowledging the important open space of budding this property, the town must maintain unlimited access to this site for all usage of this property and resist any effort to place a conservation restriction or limitation on the use of this property. That was fairly strong language, and I would say the, um, Public Works Committee, um, were fairly manless in their adoption of that, so, um, I know we have, uh, interest and there's, uh, it's always appealing to have some, uh, potential funding, but, um, there was, um, the usage of this property is, um, important to the Public Works, so I don't know whether other people would like to make any comments or any of the public like to make a comment.
I agree that it, I agree that it is important for Public Works, and I thought what was interesting about the proposal that we had was that everything that's currently happening at Public Works would in fact be allowed to continue. So, um, it sounds like they were in conflict, but if their, if their point of view is protecting the site for the use of Public Works, I thought, when I read this anyway, that it was fairly broad in terms of that. And then it's got really nothing to do with, uh, this particular issue, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, we received the envisioned Concord Report. Uh, we have not adopted any of the, uh, recommendations in there, and again, I make a plea that we sometime as soon as we can set aside like a whole Saturday morning and get into this, uh, because I think this is an example of where that sounds like we've adopted it and it's now part of what we're supposed to do, and so therefore this is an, a variance with it. One, I don't think it's a variance, and two, we haven't adopted it. So I would like to see that we continue to talk with folks, Public Works, and find out is there a particular use that, that is of concern that we, that hasn't been articulated? And can we figure out a way to ram it in there? I don't, you know, or-
I, I, one of the concerns I heard was that we can't always anticipate what our needs may be in the future, and so therefore it's, it's a difficult process to, um, lay out all the possible uses because it may come in the future, something that we have not anticipated. Um, but maybe not. Language that could be, um-
But again, if it's a Public Works activity, you know, what, okay, I don't know what it, I don't know what it could be either, but-
That can be pretty broad, from, you know, our daily use for, you know, uh, salt, sorry, snow storage or leaf drop-off to temporarily acting as a staging area for equipment working at Crosby Corner or down on that, the private, um, comedy turnpike.
Well, my point-
Things that we might or might not have an interest in use. It, it was a compelling argument that here's a place that has, um, easy access to Route Two, few neighbors, um, no residential neighbors in the near by area that would be impacted by all-night snow drop-off or any other emergency vehicle needs. Um, so, you know, what we tried to think about, could you carve out an area of land that would be exempt entirely from a CR? It sounded, it sounded like that would be a restriction of what might be used in the future, and I think there was a recognition that whatever the uses the town would envision would be environmentally sensitive to the resources, like, well, the park. So I just wanna make sure I, maybe I didn't state it all as, as clearly as I could have, but I think that was the gist of a lot of the conversation from the Public Works Committee.
Well, I just hope that we could continue the conversation and, for, if there's just an objection or we'll get it on the table, and it may not be resolvable and we're done, but if we can get issues resolved, I think we should continue to talk about this until we run up against some deadline and we got an official cut made, so.
Yeah, no, I think that, any public comments? Yes, please.
Nick Pappas.
Come forward and identify yourself if you would.
Nick Pappas, three hundred Virginia Road. Uh, I was part of the, uh, Long Range Planning Committee, and, uh, I would say that, two things. Um, one is that the, most of the uses at the site now were unanticipated, and I'm now on the, uh, Climate Action Advisory Board, and, um, one of the things I'm concerned about in the future, it's clear we don't know what to anticipate, right? There are things coming like droughts, floods, you know, closures of roads, uh, we don't know what they are. We also know that the town's gonna be doing some major investment in, uh, in its offices. We may need swing space for storage of items or for temporary trailers for people to have offices in. We just don't know. And the comparable value of that site isn't one-point-seven million dollars, it's thirty acres close to the center of Concord with unimpeded use. That's what's comparable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to, uh, make a comment? I agree, I think we, you know, hopefully can have further conversation, but I, I did think it was important to kinda lay out.
Absolutely, and Nick has articulated a couple of items. He said he couldn't anticipate it and then told us what a couple of them were. Uh, so I mean, but again, if we can talk about them and get the ones that we can and up and find out, is there something that's, you know, that's, you know, completely, that ends it? Alice has got a good point. I can't imagine, independent of what the town would want to do, that we couldn't anticipate in the future that we would do anything that would be significant, significantly harmful environmentally to that site. Um, so I just hope we keep talking and see what we can do.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go forward, Stuart.
Good evening.
I'm Kathy Anderson from the Walden Woods Project. Um, as you know, our organization submitted a preliminary offer to the town concerning the preservation of the landfill, and we've had some initial discussions about it, but, um, hearing the exchange this evening, I just felt, I wanna reiterate our willingness to continue dialogue. Um, all of the specific uses that were listed by the Concord Public Works Board would be allowable uses as far as we're concerned. Um, a vehicle that would be a little bit less, um, challenging to accomplish this might be a deed restriction versus a conservation restriction, which is a possibility as well. Our view in, uh, in, in making an initial offer to the Select Board was as a starting point for dialogue. It was never intended to be a final offer, not even close. It was, it was, uh, it was an outreach, can we talk about this? Uh, we'd love to get your feedback, we'd love to hear what the concerns are, um, if there are some specific future uses that this needs to accommodate, I hope we can talk about that, because I really feel that there is a way, uh, to enable the town to continue the important use of this area and also to protect it ten, twenty, fifty, a hundred years from now, um, in a manner that would allow the town to continue its use, but also preserve it from, uh, we talk about unanticipated future uses, there's also unanticipated future challenges at landfills that, you know, could lead to an office park or a mall out there, and that's, that is truly a, a very big concern of ours. So, um, again, I just want to express our appreciation for the board, um, evaluating this and, uh, and, uh, ask that we can continue having conversations and, uh, and just finally reiterate our, our willingness to work with you and hope that we can find a middle ground that, uh, is mutually beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. The purpose was to try to raise what the issues that we saw at this point and, you know, have a, not to cut off discussion, but to at least let you know what the concerns are, and I think that they are very valid concerns, so, but I thank you. So we're now ready to move on to-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I want to understand the process question, and that is, are we expecting to have an, uh, a warrant article for a town meeting, for a town meeting to think about whether they want this, or is it not going on? I, I guess procedurally, I'm trying to get where we are, I think there's a lot more conversation to happen, the warrant is rapidly closing. What do we, what's, what do you foresee for town meetings here for this?
I guess I kinda see that we would have the, submit the article, but, uh, at least my position at this point is, uh, somewhat unlikely that we would move it, but in order to keep it sort of, um, percolating and, uh, be able to have that discussion, that, um, we would submit the article.
Yeah, I think, uh, I might suggest, uh, Tom, that, um, independent of conversation that we might continue to have with Walden Woods and Public Works and, and the public people, we might meet with, talk with moderator and sort of explain to her what may happen. Uh, and the point of that is, what would we need to have done at January third, if that's right?
You have that deadline for the warrant.
What would that have to look like? And would we still have flexibility from there to make what kind of changes come at the town meeting? Because as Alice is inferring, it's not much time, and if we have to have it totally buttoned up, um, you know, everything done, that's gonna be a, a tough hill to climb, but if we can get a, you know, so it's clear what we're trying to do, but we don't exactly have the fine points of it laid out.
And it's a difficult time of year, there's not a whole lot of time available, frankly, so.
Well, I think that a conversation with the moderator that, or so she could maybe put some boundaries or guidelines on how much flexibility she might allow in that to be, you know, faithful to the warrant and the citizens so that they know what's going on, but give us as much time.
Do you think it's, um, wise to move forward for this town meeting, or should we continue conversations and see where we end up for a subsequent town? I mean, are we ready? It sounds like we don't know what we have-
Not right now, we're, we're certainly not ready, that's the point, and-
Exactly, I'll be away next week, just letting you know.
But we might not, we might not be able to get, uh, we might not be able to get an article written that is flexible enough that it would be something that people might be able to support, if, you know, but I think we could try, and if we can't, then-
We don't.
Then we don't. And, you know, if we can't get it done, we can't get it done, and I think we oughta give it a shot.
Do you feel an urgency to get it done now, in the next two weeks? I mean, I, I'm trying to gauge, you know, where we are in thinking about this, is there a sense of urgency that we want to work really hard for the next two weeks to perfect a warrant article to the best of our ability, working with the town manager, town moderator, to have something ready for the warrant? Or not? I mean, that's a-
Many of us are gonna be away, but, uh-
Are we pushing something to far up till?
There's nothing that needs approval by January third. Things just need to be submitted so that they conform to requirements for town, might right or-
Correct, we have, we have a draft warrant article, um, that I submitted to counsel to, for review, and he's, he's provided his comments in the context of the offer that was made, so it looks very similar to that. So, um, and, and I need some instructions from you whether to include something like that on the draft warrant that you'll see on January seventh, your meeting on Monday, January seventh, um, and if so, we can be ready for that. It might not look as broad and as open as you, uh, you might be thinking, but at least it's an article that you can take a look at.
And the next deadline is when it goes to the printer?
Which is about ten days later, I think the fourteenth.
That's, you know, some windows. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't try to do it. I don't see what the, I don't see what the downside is.
I mean, it's certainly easy enough, I suppose, and hopefully Carmen is available in the next couple of days, but that's really what we're talking about.
I'm sorry?
Uh, hopefully Carmen will be available in the next couple of days because that's really what we're talking about, I think.
Well, we have a draft.
And I can share that with the moderator and, um, and indicate that there's some interest in continued conversation and wording the article broadly enough to allow some flexibility and, um-
But for example, there's some language in it, but suppose there's a discussion that happens and we find there's four other things that we wanna get in it, will, will she allow that, for example, for example?
So what, what kind of range of flexibility we might have from the start of the show?
Uh, yeah, I mean, she's, if she says, "Come on, folks, you get to say," well, it's gonna be tough, and I think she'll give us as much flexibility as she can, so I don't see, I just don't see why not.
I guess my only concern, I'm not sure, um, I mean, I, I think it's more important to do it right than to do it quickly, and I, I worry that, um, kind of with this time, uh, I, I think we're pretty far apart at this point. It's not just tweaking, you know, sort of a little language, but, uh, I'm happy to try to do it.
Well, I'm happy to help, I don't want, I'm not sitting here.
Yeah, call me when you're done. You may be doing the, the most of the work, but, um-
I'm willing to do a shot.
Okay. That seemed, uh, yeah.
I know you're trying to close the conversation here, but I, I guess the thing I'm struggling with, um, I understand, you know, as long as we have some basic broad language by the third to work with, uh, that there's still time, um, but I think there's more aspects than, than vetting the, the language for the conditions of, for anticipated and unanticipated, um, things that need to be included, and I'm also concerned about, um, just the time, even in proceeding in good faith and generally down the path of, we're generally in agreement, um, you know, all the mechanisms that go into, um, finalizing that negotiation, and I think there's more than just the conditions that would be allowed. I mean, I think we're also talking about a purchase price and, and some other things. So, um, I'm willing, I, I do think it's good advice to hear what the moderator has to say and, and maybe we can proceed on this track, um, but I'm also sitting here thinking about all the process pieces that are involved.
I got her.
People ready to move? Item number nine is the fiscal year 2020 budget. Chris has done a fair amount of work on, uh, maybe adjustments in this.
Following up on your conversation from December third, um, Andrew's provided you the slides that we had the last time, and on the table tonight, or, and you may have received by email, also my, um, some, some options to consider, uh, so I'm suggesting, again, the, the financing committee's guideline is one million seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, a couple of changes that I've made in this, um, summary dated today, um, would be to reduce the salary reserve request for employee wage adjustments from nine-fifty to nine-hundred. Carrie LeFleur says that, that should be manageable, um, so I would include in, within- So I would include in, within that guideline amount, the salary reserve at $900,000, the full salary for the Sustainability Director, additional $41,000. And the staffing for the West Concord ambulance, this first year at $90,000, that would, a similar amount would be required in the second and third year before the general fund will provide full support. The difference in funding is coming from the new stabilization fund, where the balance is now $669,000 due to interest being accrued to the account. And in addition, I produced, as was discussed last time, the request for two parks and playgrounds, maintenance staff to help us with the new Giraud Park and the White Pond Beach, to reduce that from two $50,000 positions to one. And that amount gets you, brings you to about $10,000 above the guideline. So it's close enough to say that those items can be accommodated within the Finance Committee's guideline. It doesn't provide us any funding for the items listed below that, including $20,000 for the White Pond operation for year two, information technology, receptionists for the town manager's office, senior services at a somewhat reduced level, partial funding of the school resource officer and capital outlay. So that would, if all of those items are recommended, included in the budget, that would be $243,000 above the Finance Committee's current guideline. And then I suggested some areas with further cuts could be considered. Of course, if you, if you request that I comply with the guidelines of Finance Committee's guidelines.
I know last meeting there was concern that the ambulance service for West Concord is kind of a beginning of a process, and so we're, to some extent, not just $90,000 this year, but making a commitment for future years. And you followed up in terms of, I think there were questions about the need and some information on that. You provided us a page on that. You might want to comment where you...
Just to summarize the Fire Chief's comments, he indicated that as, my recollection, the first two years of operating the ambulance out of West Concord, that the daytime staffing of that ambulance covers about 70% of the calls that come in. So 30% of the calls are handled by the ambulance out of Walden Street. Then the evening hours, the ambulance in West Concord is operated from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and captures about 70% of demand for service. And then because it's not staffed in the evening hours, about 30% of the calls have to be responded to from Walden Street. There is a delay. It's about two minutes per call on average, the ambulance, to get across town. And that's, that's the problem we're trying to solve. The Fire Chief also indicated about 56% of the fire department's activity is in West Concord. So it's actually the majority of the work that's happening. And that doesn't include the possible Junction Village assisted living. The Fourfold Assisted Living Project would add to that workload. Concord Park, additional units of Concord Park and some additional development that's been proposed in West Concord will probably further increase demand for public safety services in West Concord. And the number of medical calls last year, I think it was a one-year sample, was 471 evening emergency medical calls that had to be responded to from, from Concord Center. So 471 out of 365 days, it's a bit over one...
That's 417.
417. A bit more than one per day. Some of them are serious medical calls, some of them are routine medical calls, but it's about, you know, one and a quarter per day perhaps.
And I know we talked about, and I was concerned about the equity issue of West Concord versus Concord, whether we might be able to have the current nighttime people be over in West Concord some of the time, but unable to do that because they're also serving on the ladder. So wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, I still feel quite strongly that I think this is an important service that the town really needs to provide, so. I don't know, other people's comments or thoughts?
Well, I feel a little bit about the ambulance service. And we've been talking about public health and safety in terms of the cell. I mean, it's, it's one of those, since the option of avoiding it involves people in there being a risk, is sort of, it's a hard place to fall down. I had a question about the Parks and, or the dropping of a maintenance staff as having to do with White Pond and Giraud.
So the immediate need for, because Giraud Park, the property was acquired, we've got some proposals, there's some mowing, and some CPA funds requested to develop both the Giraud land and the White Pond beach land, assuming that donation comes to fruition. That's a significant, plus the ride-out, new ride-out playground, there's a significant amount of additional workload that hasn't been accommodated in our historical staffing at the Parks Department. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and that led to the original request for two staff persons, as well as just maintenance at Emerson Field. The Public Works Department provides mowing services, but not a lot else beyond mowing services. They don't do the weed whacking, they don't do the care around the buildings and some of the finer work that you, you know, expect. Basically, it's a mowing crew that takes care of the large plain fields. So these Parks physicians were intended to supplement that and provide some better maintenance of our facilities, particularly with the addition of the new, the new parts. Kate Hodges, the Assistant Town Manager, feels that even one person would be, would be helpful. They may be teamed up with other people, summer crew, seasonal workers that could help out as well, but having one person better than none, particularly with new facilities coming on.
I was also wondering if, given that we have put a significant amount of resources into the care of White Pond's health, and we're about to start that process with, I'm wondering, Tom, how, clearly we want to put the same amount of care into the edges of that, since that's, that's been, for instance, in White Pond, it was the erosion that was actually creating some of the concerns about Pond's health. So.
So let me ask a question that sort of goes along with that. Am I correct in assuming that the physicians would be seasonal physicians for Parks and Recreation?
No, the two that were originally proposed and what's under consideration now is now year-round, year-round support for the Parks, because there are year-round activities. And I probably didn't make it clear to you in the earlier conversation, because there is a little bit of downtime during the winter months when things aren't growing. Those people would, we had a request from Adelia, the Natural Resources folks, to get some additional lands management. They have only a summer crew, and it's insufficient for the 1,200 or so acres and the trails and everything on conservation land. So our hope was that if there was downtime for the two Parks people, particularly in the winter months, that they could help out with the lands management on the conservation lands during the off-season. And with one person, that would, that would be a challenge to be able to provide any support for the conservation lands management, which we, you know, we really haven't met our obligation as far as managing conservation lands, providing the staff support for that.
So this position would be under Public Works, not under the NRC?
This position would be under Recreation.
Park.
Parks and Recreation. A little different from Park and Tree Staff. It's not, would not be Public Works, Park and Tree Staff. It would be Recreation Parks.
So firstly, I can see an additional one person for this first year. As we grow and as Giraud land becomes available as a park and it's much more, it's more heavily used, I think we may come back and revisit this. I think the first year, looking at how we manage White Pond operations and the changes that are happening there, the making sure everything is functioning well, I think I would see definitely supportive of one position. I don't know if others feel like, have a different feeling, but I'd advise being able to revisit this as Giraud becomes more developed as a shorter park.
I agree.
I had the same feeling about what, the first one below the line, the $20,000 is not a lot of money, but, you know, this was a big gift. We're going to invest a lot of money in it. You know, I think we really want to try to get it off on the right foot. And I'd think...
And that's what those funds are...
No, no, I know.
Make sure we do get off.
It's going to be an important, long-term resource for the town. You know, I would like to see that money, try to get that into, into the budget, so we get this off. Because we're going to have, you know, Giraud land's going to come, and I think, you know, if we can get the White Pond situation squared away, get the improvements, get it up and functioning and working well for the town, you know, so that we can turn our, more of our attention to the Giraud line. It's going to take a while for it to get...
Is ready to be built, yeah.
You know, it's not a lot of money on the one hand, but on the other hand, I would hope we really try to get out of the gate strong on that.
There are high expectations for that first summer. We've got to be ready for it.
Yeah, you know, and you know, you get a phobolic stuff the first year around. People, it's going to be, "I told you so," and "Jesus," and all that kind of stuff.
I mean, the difficulty is trying to make a budget. They're all, I think, necessary items. It depends on kind of which are the most essential. If you've got to make cuts, where are they going to be made? I think it's a good effort. As I said, my biggest concern is the ambulance in West Concord. That's a safety issue. The others are important, but...
I agree with that too. But, you know, we take, we take the position of the Finance Committee using their words, not their position, but sustainability, White Pond is really trying to sustain a long-term resource for the town. So I wouldn't mind it all to have Chris go back and, you know, it's made cuts to, you know, what is it, like 10 grand?
Yeah. The original request was, in the current year, we've got $30,000 requested at the October town meeting to start the season next memorial. And then we're thinking that a year later, 20 would do fine, and then 10 the third year and off by then, if not sooner, we probably, the Fire Department should be able to manage it on its own. The request is for 20 for the year from now, or in the next fiscal year, but we could reduce that to 10 and still probably be reasonable. That's under the list of possible cuts. Possible further reductions would be to not eliminate the White Pond support, but to cut it in half from 20 to 10.
So make sure I understand you. So you've got that dividing line between Park and playgrounds and White Pond operation?
Correct. So it doesn't fit within the Finance Committee's guideline?
No, I know that. I thought the Finance Committee was 1.07.
It's up to, up above, it's 1,071. So the dividing line is 1,081. So it's, I need to make some further cuts, but I think it can do that within the budget requests. So I would, if the board's instructions are to conform to the Finance Committee's guideline, I would bring it to 1,071 with some, with some minor changes. So the question is, do you have any guidance for me on going above the Finance Committee's guideline, recognizing you don't typically vote your position on the town meeting's budget until after the public hearing in February? So it's really just what you want to see in the budget document.
Any comments by anybody else there?
I could see going beyond the guidelines. The biggest cut would be, the easiest and biggest cut would be the ambulance services. They just don't feel comfortable making that cut.
Right.
And the next, the rest are nickel and diming ourselves on activities that were supported at town meeting. There's expectations that we would provide. And I guess, you know, we can, I would support going over the guidelines. And can you clarify where they propose above, knowing that we're above the guidelines in the town meeting aside? That's, well, that's what I would...
In doing so, that's a 5.2 essentially, a budget increase in town operations compared with a 4.4 to guideline.
I'm not sure. I thought it was understanding Alice, but, so you're suggesting what number?
So I'm suggesting...
I'm trying to get a...
5.2%. I would go with a...
So the entire list of...
Above the line, percent increase over the FY '19 is 5.2%. The budget guideline is 4.42%. So I'm suggesting that I could support going above the guideline to meet the needs expressed at town meeting for the, for the costs that are detailed above that line. So it's one, one, the $243,000 difference. Right? Did I get that? So we're over a quarter of a million dollars over the budget guideline, under, what's the total budget?
25 million.
25 million.
25.2.
The capital outlay is what exactly?
The capital outlay is, that's for computers, police cruisers, dump trucks, that sort of thing. Our target is to try to spend between 2% and 3% of the operating budget on that type of equipment, so that we're guaranteed to have that money available and it doesn't just all go to staffing. So as the budget grows, it's important to grow the cap, that capital spending with it, so we don't spend less and less of the share.
And have you traditionally used it every year?
Yes, yeah, generally speaking, and we are at 2.5%. So if Carrie Lefleur, the Finance Director, said if you were to strike, to cut the $75,000, that would bring us down to about 2 and 1/4% of the budget. Still within the 2% to 3% range that we target, but on the lower end of that.
And I'd be more inclined to try to struggle with less than the $75,000, and that would bring it down at least seemingly under 5%.
But your funding plans keep you within the target.
Right.
Then I think I would agree with Tom, that we perhaps could think about losing that.
And that's a pretty good number, so.
And the IT support for the library and the Concord Police Department, that seems very, they seem to be very different needs. So it's, it's hard to lump them together and have, I mean, one would, would seem to be public safety and the other would be public access to information.
Correct. But both departments have high need for technological services, and they've relied on a librarian in one case or a police officer, another case, sort of untrained IT people to manage the IT department for those departments. Things are getting so complex that they really need some support from, as a, from a permanent IT staff member. So I see these funds as being split, so that half of the money would be available to the police department, and the police would contribute an equal amount and would have a full-time person working on police IT, half paid by the IT department, half paid by the PD, and similarly in the library. Half of this fund is identified here would be in the IT department, and half would come from the library for their commitment to...
And would that be a new hire in both cases?
Not necessarily. Perhaps, but not necessarily.
So are you proposing that...
I'd be proposing, I'm going to be the capital outlet, the $75,000, try to do without that. Though the others, I think are all really pretty essential, and, you know, you're saving 60-some thousand by cutting them all, so.
Chris, at the, last time you presented us with this preliminary budget, you mentioned that the school resource officer, the full amount will kick in when?
So I'm proposing $10,000 be allocated from the general fund for the coming year. So the difference would be paid for by the new stabilization fund, really the police department's first tapping into that million-dollar stabilization fund. And so, I don't know if I can answer your question, but at the outset, that would be, so next year, you'd see an increasing amount requested from the, for the general fund support, perhaps $20,000 on an increasing basis until the salary of the police officer was fully funded through, from the general fund.
From the general...
Again, this is the police department's first use of those funds, so I think we can be a little bit more...
So that, I'm not contesting the $10,000 here, I'm just trying to capture the future. So that item and the, the fire department staff item, where is that captured besides in your head? You know, what's going to be coming up year two, three, going down?
So that would be documented in the, in the budget this year. It would be very clear to everybody that, say, for firefighters, that over time, that's about $275,000 commitment of staffing, and we're going to build up the general fund support for that over a three-year period. And in the fourth year... And in the fourth year, general fund. So that would be explained in the budget that we're starting a multi-year commitment as we did six years ago when we first started the second ambulance.
And then for the school resource?
Same thing for the school resource. So that would be detailed exactly how the funding would work.
So then if we went with that, then that would give, that would get a budget of 1.239.
With which.
Taking the 75,000.
75 out.
From the 243.
And what does that give us?
And then, I'm sorry.
Okay, as long as that's not really.
1, 2, 3, 9. Three zeros. And that, that would be 4.9, 4.897%.
And it would be $168,000 above the finance committee's guideline.
I guess I would.
Okay, so I'll be able to work on that. And again, the board has not committed to funding any of this until after the public hearing. Thank you, Chris.
Public like to make any comment on that or?
But do, will you go, in addition to the work you're doing, will you go back to the finance committee?
If requested to appear before the finance committee again, I'd be happy to do so.
Come forward, Tom. Good evening. Tom Tarpe, chairman of the finance committee, speaking for the finance committee. I. We are concerned, of course, as the finance committee about adding full-time employees. I don't, I haven't really gotten a number as to what the current census of full-time employees is. Do you have a?
It is in the budget book.
Yes.
I have trouble locating it. And I'll include in the budget book maybe a five-year recap of the, we have increased the full-time staff of the town.
Right.
So I can show that here if you give me a few minutes.
Sure. And if it's not that much more difficult, a 10-year recap would be, would be great. Because we're looking back at some of our numbers.
Every year, publish the number of full-time equivalents that are proposed in that particular budget. We don't often recap where we've been, so we'll make sure to do that this year. But each year in this budget document is the number of full-time positions that are.
Okay. And am I, I'm a little bit confused as to what the proposal is for the, are we talking about adding five, six, or seven full-time employees in this budget?
The, the school resource officer was already added in October. It was approved by town meeting, but I'll have to include that in the budget.
Sure.
And so it's a police officer. And four firefighters is proposed and one park and playgrounds maintenance person. And then the technology person is probably equivalent of another FT, one additional FT.
So seven, okay. And so I'm interested, when you do find this, what that is in terms of percentage. And this is, you know, employees are forever. So, and as to details of the ambulance crew, I had, somehow I had the number of, the eventual cost just for salary would be 318,000. Was that ever, did I make that up or? Where did that number come from? It might have come just from.
I'm not sure.
Okay. But, so I had been working with that number as the salary number. And then, of course, if you, for computation purposes, call that 320 and then add 25% for. The burden, we're bringing it up to $400,000. And so that's the number that we're looking at. And we're looking at 56% of 417 trips that are made by the, by the crew on Walden Street, being made to West Concord. So we're talking about something slightly over 200 trips. And, and we're talking about $400,000. So, you know, we're talking, and each trip from Walden adds two minutes, as I understood, to.
Right, right.
So, so we're really talking about $1,000 a minute.
Well, I think the difference, at least where I'm coming from, is that, I mean, first of all, the two minutes, I'm not going to kind of get in quibble, but I have it hard to believe that two minutes gets everywhere in West Concord. But the other issue is we're foreseeing a need that's growing. And I think one of the problems with dealing with a budget is you can't just go based upon the population of the town. You have to go on some of the other aspects, such as we've now gotten a good deal of other town lands that are going to require some attention to them. Where there's a number of unfunded mandate that the state imposes on the town. So there is a lot of items that just to provide excellent service, we have to have additional employees. That's just the way I look at it. And I think that the fact that we do get excellent service, you can't do that on the cheap. And I hope that the, you know, citizens of the town, I applaud you for bringing the attention of having it be sustainable. I'm not convinced that your method of measuring what is sustainable, I adopt. I have some problems with that. And I think your committee has in fact had some difficulties in coming up with a, an item or a number that is sustainable. It's a very difficult process. You and I have spoken about the additional of assessed value of properties in Concord. And I think that perhaps is a better measure. But that's where I'm coming from. We have services we have to supply. I think the public appreciates those services and I'm willing to kind of go and advocate for that. But I do appreciate all the hard work that your committee does to try to draw us back and make us be reasonable. And it's easy to spend other people's money.
Sure.
Can I offer a slightly different take on this? And that is that I look at ambulance service as a service that is much like an insurance policy. I would hate to not be able, I would hate to be the one waiting 10, 15 minutes for an ambulance to get to me. So my cost per service isn't really the measure that I would look at. It's the cost of the insurance policy that we can be wherever we're needed in West Concord, Concord Center. And so, yeah, there's some downtime. And it may look like it's a thousand dollars per minute, but that's only if you look at the actual time of use. As we see a changing and growing need in West Concord, we're looking at 58% of our service calls right now are West Concord with development plans in several areas of West Concord. I worry that we, you know, the numbers are growing and I hate to be in a position where we can't provide adequate service in one part of town. So I look at it as an insurance policy as much as a, I know, a service provider.
Sure. Well, I don't want to take up your time debating this, but.
Well, taken. I know you have the work that you've put into this and thinking about it, right? You know, like I have enough of a bunch of like you guys are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, could I just mention, it's on page 79 of the budget book for the current year. It's an overview of town government full-time equivalents in detail. So again, I'll endeavor to expand that roster, which is for the current year, 236 employees. So we'll have details as to what next year's budget would increase that full-time census or roster of employees. And we'll go backwards to see what we've done.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
And just two other points if I may. Fire chief wanted to mention, one of the reasons we set up the ambulance in West Concord was because we were really relying heavily on mutual aid. We were drawing staff from other towns to us on a regular daily basis. And we, and the staffing of our own ambulance really reduced that. He has noticed that we're increasing our demand for other towns to come assist us in those evening hours as well as other times. That's one point he wanted to make. But then also that's the ambulance on, at Walden Street, the Walden Street headquarters is a dual-service ambulance that the crew staffs both the ambulance and the ladder truck. So if the ladder is out on a call, the ambulance crew is not there. So that's a likely situation where we'd call for mutual aid, help from Lincoln or.
So right now, if the ambulance crew at Walden Street is out and it's in the evening on a ladder, at the ladder, we don't have.
We would probably call mutual aid.
But in any part of Concord.
That's correct.
Are you ready to move on to item 10, discuss potential warrant articles for 2019 annual town meeting? You can sense the draft. Don't know whether people have any particular comments on.
Just, I did, at the board's request, consult with town council about three potential warrant articles. One was inappropriate, all related to housing. One was the appropriation of funds for affordable housing. The second was concerned of real estate transfer tax, which probably involves special legislation. And then the third was a surcharge on building permits. Town council got that to me today confirming that those latter two are likely, would likely require special legislation and a home rule petition and offered assistance drafting. She offered assistance drafting those articles, so.
Well.
Board, we should continue. I'll ask them.
Linda and I, Linda and I met with Alicia Scaho, who is the chief counsel and research director for the joint committee on revenue last Friday. And she, we were asking her about this same situation. And she indicated that she would provide a draft for us based on what other towns had proposed in legislation. She wasn't sure, and she was going to get back to us, but she hasn't yet, about the, that's the surcharge one. She wasn't clear or sure about whether or not we could do the building surcharge, permit surcharge, or would have to be legislative. She hasn't got, she said she'd get back to us, but she hasn't. But she was very helpful and said that she would provide a draft for us. I think that we can get it to Mina and he can take a look at it.
Good contact to have to work.
Good contact. Do you want to talk about this all for a minute? Because we, I mean, so the, we had the idea of whether it's one, two, or three, I don't know how many articles it was, but one is a free cash allocation as long as it's within the parameters of 5 to 10% of the budget. The second is this surcharge that we were doing.
So real estate transfer fee, is that?
Transfer fee, I'm sorry. It's transfer fee. And the third is the building permit surcharge. So we can get all three of those done. And we can get them ready anyway. But the question that I don't think we've really addressed yet, that we need to think about is, okay, suppose there's all passes. Who gets the money and who spends the money? And we really don't have yet, anyway, an idea. So we, Linda and I were simply talking about this. And our thinking along these lines is now that we could go to the town with these warrant articles, but go to them also with a proposal for a couple of additional warrant articles. Would be, and we haven't had more than three minutes talking about this. But one would be to set up a committee. And the committee would be responsible for, it would be a committee made up of the existing housing entities within the community. And they would be responsible for coming back to, first the select board and then the town a year from now with a definition of what the goals in the town, affordable housing goals are. And also they would come back to us with, we would come to the town with the idea of creating a sustained committee that would then be the recipient of the money and would be authorized, and we'd have to get all this squared away, on spending money on behalf of the town's goals that this committee and the town meeting would have articulated. Because I'm reluctant to go to a town meeting, as much as I support it, I'm reluctant to go to a town meeting and say, well, let's pass these revenue generating devices. If we don't have a mechanism, or how are we going to figure out something we can all agree on via, this would be town meeting, that this is what we're trying to accomplish. And this is how we're going to go about doing it and who's going to do it. Whether or not we go with these warrant articles, one, two, or three of them, I think our obligation is to come to town meeting with some sense of how this would work subsequently. Is that fair?
So what we're asking from two of the articles would be special legislation that would allow us to put this in place. Well, that takes another round of town meeting.
Yeah, we've got time.
That gives us time to figure out what is the entity that will hold the funds and make decisions on dispersal.
No, I think we do have some time. And we could even structure the, we could even structure the free cash allocation so that it wouldn't be in the current budget. But it would be a proposal for 20, is that right? Fiscal 20? Fiscal 20. So there wouldn't be any cash available, you know, until after town meeting in 2020. Because if we don't, then we're going to have to figure out some fund to park it in in the meantime. So we'd have to create a, I don't know what. Some kind of stabilization fund, put the money there and have the town then take it out in a subsequent.
I would, I think that that's, we can figure that out and start building the reserves in '19 and not wait till '20, at least on the free cash. Because we need sufficient funds in an account to be able to execute on an opportunity. And I hate to forego another year. And in that, but I think that we will be able to figure out, well, Liz, you can't. We see it's, we ought to be able to figure out the funding vehicle. And if it carries help, whether it's a separate vehicle, if we make use of one of the housing, you know, organizations now, that we take those funds and administer them with our big budget. But I think we can figure that out rather than we.
Well, because Liz presented us with the number of alternatives and we were looking at the Blackbird.
I have no problem whatsoever putting, creating a stabilization fund, putting free cash in. I got no problem with that. But. But I don't think it's going to be quite so simple to figure out what the goal is of the town in affordable housing and what the rules are for some group of citizens to actually, because remember, the whole point of this is to create a fund so that there's flexibility. We don't have to wait to town meeting to go ask the citizen for money to do something. Something comes up, you know, you can act on it.
Wouldn't this committee report to the select board and the select board next to the termination?
Well, that's one idea. The other idea is we just simply empower them to do it. Here's the goals that the town has articulated. We don't have them yet. And you're to spend the money in furtherance of those goals. And report back to us on a regular basis so we can make sure everybody knows what's going on. But no, it's not us making decisions. It's this committee, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. We need to sort of discuss that and flush it out a bit more, I think.
I think we do. And I, but I think going to the town and saying, let's create these sources of revenue without a clear understanding of what we're going to spend it on or who's going to spend it. I, you know, I think it, I'm sitting there, I'm going, I don't know about that. Even though I would be, you know, supportive of the full. So that's a lot of warrant articles about this.
Well, two of my questions for special legislation. So we know that those are, that takes some time in the legislature to allow us to enact. It takes another act at town meeting to put in place what we want to do with it.
And then probably vote.
And probably vote. So that's, those, I think there's an imperative to go forward on those. And I think we have the time to figure out exactly what you're saying. Who is the keeper of these funds? Where, how do we set up an account and who should administer them? We have some time to do that, but I hate to wait till town meeting '20.
No, no, we do. But we have to go to town meeting with enough intent of what we're doing that the town will say, oh, okay, I get it.
This one, I feel like we have a lot to go on. We have Liz's report to the select board. We have the, the affordable housing funding committee's detailed reports. And so it's our responsibility now to figure out how we want to make this work. And I think that we can hunker down and do that at the court meeting.
I'm all for it. I'm all, no, I'm all for it. It was just, I think, the realization that we would have to go beyond the funding articles to create some organizational articles, I think.
And to Alice's point, you know, we also have a, an approved housing production plan from the planning department. And the planning department has also worked with the two, at least 2,000 groups and identified some next. some next projects that are on the top of their lists. And then, as the Affordable Housing Funding Committee report pointed out, and we know from experience, that these opportunities come up and you need the flexibility to respond outside of even the identified goals, which we have done historically, just to add to our affordable housing stock. So I think our discussion about trying to come up with some, an opportunity for a committee to define this, I think would have to be in connection, at least with the planning department, besides the representatives from each of the, each of the housing groups. I do think that labeling the two warrant articles that have to go to special legislation as longer term acknowledging somewhere in the writing or in the box, you know, where we talk about the description, as long term strategies, longer term strategies, is important to label it that way. But I do also think that, to the extent that we can identify a dedicated affordable housing fund, should we be able to be successful with the short, with the free cash money, is important so that it could be accessed for year two with some CPA funds.
Exactly.
Or some state or federal leverage funds that are available for the smaller projects. We've still protected all along, and we hopefully will have in place by town meeting our financial project, which has been the priority at this point.
Chris, do you know off, offhand if, because your point, I get your point, but if we created a stabilization, what? If we created a stabilization fund for the free cash, so we have a free cash fund, people say, yeah, great, boom, all of a sudden, there's whatever there is in it. We could put it in a stabilization fund. But the problem with that is you can't just take it out. You have to go back to town meeting and do it. So it doesn't.
So we're still, we're still back in 2020.
So you don't create the kind of flexibility.
Although we did talk about a revolving fund as an, as a, as a mechanism that might give us the flexibility. I think that was one of the options that was presented to us.
So I get, what I'm going to suggest that we, this is a bigger conversation, and that we hold as another meeting where this is like top of our discussion agenda, that we are prepared to really think about which of the options we would like to see move forward and figure out the questions that we need to ask and see what we need to get resolution of before town meeting. But that also affects the warrants.
We need to have them ready for the warrant. I mean, we can't decide to meet and check.
Do you think we have to have mechanisms in place before the warrant? The warrant said.
We would certainly have to have something indicating our intention. I mean, maybe we don't have.
Oh, the intention is to have a funding, you know, a identified funder, an identified account for which.
I think we can probably do it, but, you know, it's, we're going to have one, what sounds like if Mina is right, and both of those require legislative action, we can probably have one, one article for that, one article for free cash, and then a short term funding article, and then some kind of organizational article. What are the goals going to be? What's going to be the setting the committee up?
So you think that needs town meeting approval? That's the article on how we would administer affordable housing funds? Is that what you're proposing? Is that why you're feeling it's?
Well, my thinking was, if I'm sitting in the audience and I'm hearing about all of these revenue sources that you want us to approve, I'm going to want to know, well, how's this going to work? And if our response is, I don't worry about it.
No, no, I, I'm not saying we didn't have an answer. I'm just asking you, asking the town meeting to approve the structural plan for how these funds would be administered? Is that, I mean, we don't do that on most other accounts. Stabilize, the new stabilization fund, none of those go to town meeting.
No, the idea would be for the town to encourage, urge, whatever the word is that's used, us to create a committee whose responsibility would be to.
So do we need that at town meeting? Or can we just do that as we have set up other committees? Are you going, like, you want a mandate from the, from our legislative body? Is that helpful? Or can we just?
We can just do it. I mean, whether we should or not.
But if we're ready to present by town meeting, we would be able to present how, how we were going to administer these funds. As a supporting document to why we would want the town meeting to vote for them. Or to answer, you know, the glosses in the audience who are saying, they want me to vote for all this money, what are you going to do with it?
There's few of us in the county.
I think there's a few on the finance committee who might ask that question.
Thompson using. Well, okay, but, well, so, so if I'm understanding, then what you're thinking is that we would concentrate our time now in getting the funding article squared away. And we will need to create some kind of fund as a holding one, so we'll figure out a revolving fund, stay, I don't know, one that has some kind of flexibility. And then we'll work on a statement explaining to the citizens how we intend to go forward.
How we intend to administer the funds that we are able to secure. That, that would be, I, that would be my approach and to consider for ideas.
Well, it's helpful. I think that's easier in some sense, because it gives us more time to give more thought to it.
Well, that would be our responsibility as a select board, to think that.
Okay, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Any other items that people would like to discuss, or feel we need to review? They all largely seem to, you know, standard, everything, but.
We don't owe the other citizen petitions, all right? Other than the ones that we've heard about.
Yes.
May I make a comment on what you just discussed?
Yep.
Steve Carr from Mustafield Road. On the discussion you just had, and without any forethought whatsoever, I would tend to agree with Alice. Rightly or wrongly, I think there's a lot of goodwill that you have, you, the board, have in the town at this particular point. And I don't think there'd be much concern on the general population if the motion said, you know, to be spent as you, the board, decide directly, or as you appoint a committee to decide it. I think, I think the hands would, would go up. So I, I think you can feel, just my guess would be that you could feel confident, that you could proceed in the way that, that you were talking about, without having to get into a big, long discussion about who's going to be on what committee and how it's going to get decided. That doesn't mean, somebody doesn't need to think about that, but I don't think, I wouldn't think you need to worry too much about getting, spending hours worrying about what the town's going to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else want to comment?
The woman did caution us that the legislature has not been all that kind to home rule petitions about taxes.
And I believe I saw that the governor is intending to increase the transfer tax that's currently in order to fund CPA funding. So I don't know how that will work as well, but I think it's worth going forward. Okay, review and update board meeting schedule for fiscal year 19. That's a very powerful one that we all have. And I note that it looks like there are five meetings within six weeks. Or I keep, yeah, five meetings within six weeks, so we'll be busy. And we probably do need to have another Saturday meeting or something to do with the long range.
I really think it's very important.
I agree.
I think we just started to vote on Saturday. I think we'd want to maybe invite the chairs, the two chairs of the long range planning committee to come with us, because we've got to unbundle that. Because if you don't, you have parts of the town reading it and going, oh, okay, away we go. And maybe that's good, maybe it's not.
Well, I think the planning board's made a lot of progress on their actions and what they were recommending, and there's no reason not to, so.
No.
I think it would be beneficial.
So I think we, I mean, I, I would hope we don't do it now, but we set it late soon. Get this done, and we have to get it done. You know, we've got a few windows here, because all of a sudden, public hearings are going to be upon us, and town meeting is going to be upon us.
I think we should try and find it on Saturday in January.
I do, too.
Find out perhaps when the chairs might be available.
All right, I take that off, I'll get to long range planning chairs, and then Linda, you and I can.
Yeah.
Are they not disbanded? They're disbanded, but.
But you can invite them as individuals.
Yes, they're, yes, we did dissolve the committee. But they can give us their wisdom. No, absolutely.
So are there any Saturdays that are out right now for, for us? Okay.
Well, I think we should try very hard to be available.
Yeah. Otherwise, we, I'm sure we.
One concern we have, or Andrew and I have, is the board, you have a meeting, a business meeting on Jan, Monday, January 7th, but not on the 21st, when you would normally meet because of the Martin Luther King holiday. And then the 28th, I think, is the night of the caucus. So you would probably just meet briefly for 30 minutes or so. And then you enter into February with the public hearings, where you have often, you're tied up in the public hearings, and so you have limited time to conduct business. So you might want to consider maybe Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, or some other alternative time to just get a regular business meeting in while the warrant is closing, going to the printer, some of the articles that you are interested in.
It always turns out that's a huge thing.
So we, I added the 14th for January on here, so we have a meeting on the 7th and the 14th.
So that's, that wasn't on the original schedule, so that's been added.
That's what I said, we've got the 7th, the 14th, the 28th, and then February 4 and 11th, so that's five out of six weeks, yeah. And, but I think, you know.
So is the 14th before going to the printer before?
I think it goes to the printer on the 14th.
On the 14th.
I thought it was the 17th.
So, okay, so anyways, shortly before it goes to the printer. So you'll have an opportunity to.
So the 14th is okay, I mean, because that's a couple of days.
Order of the articles. You'll have a first bracket looking at the warrant and ordering them on 7th, but then it'd probably be great to have the meeting following week if you're good with that.
So the 12th and the 19th are two Saturdays in January. We should ask Jane to see if she could.
She's available.
Yeah.
Let's check on those.
Get Gary and Elise.
Okay. It looks like. Need a motion to approve the updated board meeting schedule?
I think so, refer, I have to get it all, I don't know.
Jane, while we were away, we decided the 12th and the 19th should be suggested dates. Check with Gary and Elise.
So I would move to approve the updated board meeting schedule for FY 19.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Annual license renewals. These are the licenses that were not renewed at December 3, 2018 meeting because they have not been submitted at that point. I don't think we need to read them all out, so make it on a memo.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
Move to approve the 2019 annual license, license renewals listed on the memo dated December 17, 2018.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are now ready for public comments. Yes?
At the risk of overstaying my welcome.
You're always welcome.
So I'm Tom Tarpe, Chair of the Finance Committee, and speaking for the Finance Committee. I just wanted to speak to you briefly to correct some potential misapprehensions you may have about my earlier comments. First of all, I, I want it to be absolutely clear that every single member of the Finance Committee has tremendous respect and appreciation for all of our town employees. We have all had occasions, some of us, many, when they have done us tremendous services, and for those, we are all greatly appreciative. It is only because we have such respect and a desire to continue keeping those employees as happy as we possibly can that we're a little reluctant to add more employees. The second is, in my example of doing the calculation to, that referred to $1,000 per minute for the delay. I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we are that callous to ignore the anxiety and potentially the agony that somebody who's waiting for an ambulance would be experiencing. And two minutes would be, two minutes that we would prefer them not to have to experience. However, I use that example as simply a means of showing the type of calculation that we have to go through to make the difficult choices that we all face. Do we add the ambulance crew, or do we add one more unit of affordable housing? Do we meet the, the OPEB arc? Do we, you know, there are dozens of these choices. And that's the kind of calculus that we have to go through, and that's, I, I, if I left anybody with the impression, and I'm sorry, some of the audience left before I got to say this, if I left anyone.
TV audience is still a rarity.
Right, okay, let's hope. If I left anybody with the impression that, that we are so callous as to diminish the suffering of somebody waiting for an ambulance, I apologize, and that, that is not my intention.
I'm sure no one took it that way. But the board, but the board, too, has to make decisions about, you know, what to do and what not to do, and what to postpone and what not to postpone.
Absolutely.
So it's not just a finance decision. It's often much more complex.
Now, as I said earlier, certainly, we appreciate the hard work that the Finance Committee does do and the time that you all put in, because it's considerable, I know, being liaison, and until this year, I don't think I did appreciate it. I guess we tell committee liaison reports.
Um, let's see, I've been to a couple of the Housing Development Corporation and the Concord Housing Authority and Affordable Housing Funding Committee, and, you know, they're all, they, the two committees that are actually dealing with the development of the housing have identified priorities. Should funds become available, they have their own priorities. And the Affordable Housing Funding Committee continues to try to be ready and for town meeting, and if they're needed to articulate, I guess, and support for some of the issues that are coming forward. I attended the ZBA meeting, and Chris already mentioned about the addition at Concord Park that's coming up, and it was approved, as well as the addition for Holy Family. But the other, the other things that struck me, two items in particular, everything from approving a bed and breakfast in the White Pond area, to a non-conforming lot approval, where the ZBA weighs in when it's over 50% of the size of the structure that's being asked for the addition. And someone of, actually, a couple of people. And someone of, actually, a couple of people from the audience actually raised the question, how many waivers are executed for this purpose? And what is the point of having a regulation if they're always waived? Yeah, in terms of the, this, I'm raising this just because this was an audience concern that's come forward. It was by more than a couple of people. And they didn't actually have the figures to support it factually. But they thought in general that, you know, this was part of what their job was, to weigh when it was appropriate and when it was not. And let's see. Recreation Committee. And I think the new director for the BD Center talked about some of the changes he's implementing there and how it's being received by the membership. And actually, there was someone from the membership who during public comment, commented on the positive direction that some of the changes were being made, had made. The other thing they talked about was how successful they felt the town lighting and... And they are also projecting conservatively that they should more than meet the income at White Pond compared to where the projections were given to them when it was accepted by the town. So that was good news for that piece of the process. And that concludes my remarks.
A number of us attended. There was a thank you event held for Chris by the League of Women Voters, hosted by the Bukuses, which was a delightful event. And a number of us attended that. I also attended the Hugh Cardinal Trust Committee meeting. Their business is normal. They're getting ready for the process of distributing silent fund funds and electing officers. So that was good. And I also attended the municipal light plant meeting. Citizens out there, want to go see a really interesting committee dealing with some really long-range issues. I'd recommend to go try that out. Alice and I met with the two, two of the consultants from MRI, the firm we have chosen to help us with the Town Manager Search. We met with them to just get prepared for a meeting tomorrow night. It's a search committee that is meeting tomorrow night with the consulting firm. That's the first meeting I'll have had with a consultant firm. Tom had mentioned, though, that the consultants are meeting with the chairs of the various committees at their standing meeting on Wednesday. And we have already arranged a meeting for the consultants to meet with town employees, senior staff, January 2nd, I think is when that is. We just did that because it was, there were opportunities there to do it. One of the things that the search committee will be doing will be planning the public outreach sets of activities of constituencies and open forums for citizens of town participate in. They'll be creating a webpage. The town will also be creating a spot on the webpage where all of the material associated with this will be capped. So that's my report.
I, as I said earlier, attended Dallas Public Works. And that was interesting. And then we had the discussion about the proposal from Walden Woods. And as I stated, they were pretty unanimous in their attitude about it. I had earlier attended the Historic District Committee Commission. They had a hearing with about the issue of Kai's Road as a potential location and for a cell tower. And I think it was very well received. They took in a lot of information. And I think their initial feeling was that their hands were tied. But a couple of the members of the committees said, you know, let's keep an open mind. And so they recommended that the citizens and Verizon kind of work to come with a more definite plan and certainty in terms of the height of the potential power or pole. And so I think it was a well-received meeting. And then I also attended the school committee, where they had discussions about, they were, the proposal for state funding for middle school was for the second year. They were not part of the final group. And so their discussion had to do with, do they go forward with seeking funds to get a consultant to get the design, get started on the process? If they do get funding, and I think they'll attempt in one more year, if they do get funding, they have to start all over again because of state regulations. So that there was a question in terms of, does it make sense to extend the funds? Or how much longer can they delay? Because the need is pretty certain and only getting more expensive just to keep it operating. So those were all interesting meetings and good meetings.
I had the good work fortune to be out of the, out of town most of last week and having missed both the HGC, which Tom just described, and the NRC meeting, which I did meet with the director, Delia Kay. And she was fairly, it's a quiet time for the NRC in general. The PAC committee is moving forward with a number of its initiatives. Again, it's still very much in the early stages of working through how Minute Man... I always get this wrong. I shouldn't. Minute Man Media Network, it's a, it's too many M's for me. It's M-M-N, is moving in. And the, and today, there was a walk-through of some of Brookside Square's new lots by the Concord Junction, or the West Concord Junction Cultural District, one of our two cultural districts. And that had some fairly robust discussions. Nothing is being decided right now. This is part of its, that committee's establishment in the district. The, its sister committee, the Concord Center Cultural District, is now fully formed. And we're starting to see members be identified, or future members identified. So hopefully, over the next month or so, we will have two comparable committees up and running.
So I attended a meeting with the moderator, Markel, Kari, Erin, Heather, on e-voting. It was a discussion about whether we might think about electronic voting at town meeting. And it was an interesting discussion as we went through. But most interesting is that thought that there may be a strong interest in a town meeting study committee, much like the town governance study committee. Worked on looking at our charter and changes to town governance. It specifically was, the committee was specifically precluded from looking at town meeting procedures. And so there's an interest in maybe looking at, do we want a similar study on how our town... It often comes up at town meeting, that people think that we need to shorten the time for standing up roll calls to whether we need to go to polls, as well as present a town meeting and how to make it fair and equitable. So there may be a new warrant article that we could expect the town meeting to look at, setting up a town meeting procedure study committee. I also attended the planning board meeting, which spent a good hour and some on the 1440 Main Street project. It's, you know, the developer has made a lot of changes to the plan. There's still a lot more conversation to go. It's a fairly big project. Parking study is not yet done. It's a 36-unit PRD. With an estimated 72 cars, two-car garage in each one of those units. So there's more to come on that one. I believe that two interesting items from the planning board is that they will not be moving an article on the limited business district two. And I understand that from this discussion that they, they will be moving an article on a formula business by the Concord Center. And that the Historic Districts Commission will not be moving an article to extend the Main Street Historic District this year. I also attended the public works, as you, but I think we've heard a good summary of everything from the public works from the public works director, Ray Train. And I've already covered the town and the plan of the search committee updates, White Pond. We will, are about to receive after the next meeting a 20-point recommendations for the management and development of White Pond as a swimming beach for the town. A number of really good recommendations. And I think when the report or recommendations are final, I think we should invite them to present them. It's a very thoughtful group who are concerned with the impacts of the neighborhood preservation of the quality of White Pond itself, access to the pond from the various trails, how best to run the beach, or what the expectations are. So I think we should invite them soon as they're ready, probably early January, to talk about it. And they also just got back from the Minute Man School Building Committee. We are on budget and on time still. There was a setback with National Grid strike. We are unable to install the gas lines. The first of the equipment will be live in to the site. It's almost all been buttoned up. And they're starting to do some painting on the upper floors, and the walls are in. You're welcome to go on another tour. At any point you'd like to see it, I can arrange that. And there was an open house where 228 graders came and toured the school. And some large number of them are looking like they decided they liked it well enough and want to go on a tour. So they're looking like that'll easily make a goal enrollment of 180 to 190 freshmen next year.
Wow.
None of the other towns are also looking at changing their membership status. Belmont is interested in rejoining the district. Watertown is interested, but they're going to postpone their decision to, till 2020. But they invited Minute Man to come and market the school to the eighth graders so that they can see that there's an opportunity for them to join the district at a later date. And Cambridge is also in discussions with Minute Man. Superintendent wants to create a plan for vocational education in Cambridge that may include Minute Man. So some major changes in membership possible.
Could you go back to the, I heard you, and I'm glad that the formula business one isn't going to be moved?
No, the formula business is, yes. The limited business two, which was a... The vacant bank. There was a lot of discussion about whether you could identify, a change of the use table. And they decided to begin.
Oh, this is for the particular building.
There's one building included in the limited business two district. Citizens Bank is now...
Too bad about that.
Or is it T-Bank, T-Bank? Because there's now one also in West Concord. It's been empty for five years, four years.
Do we have any green cards, you know, for the Minute Man? I know Carrie Flood is terminating her time. We need to get the word out to get somebody. It's, she's done a terrific job, and I hate to have it kind of drop. Also, the units at 1440, any idea what the price range of those are estimated? Is there any discussion on that?
I don't have that in my notes. But I believe the question was asked, and it was in the 800,000 range.
One affordable or very limited?
One affordable, so far.
Concord.
So far. So there's still a lot of discussion about this.
I don't think it's been settled yet.
No.
Thank you, everyone. Now we move to miscellaneous correspondence. I have a couple. Anybody else?
I will have one when you're...
Okay. I was going to, there is the proposed letter to James O'Reilly. I don't know if that was the one you were...
Yes. We received first a request for public records in November, I think it was. A request for 24 sets of minutes, open session and executive session. Went back a couple of years on various topics. We did not provide those minutes in a timely fashion, partly because some of them hadn't been approved. And the board did approve some of those earlier this evening. So we had, we now have a complaint. And the complaint requests that the board acknowledge that it failed to comply with the open meeting law. When responding to the request, acknowledged that 24 executive sessions identified by the complainants did not comply with the law and released forth with all documents requested by the complainants. So that complaint came in on December 6th. Town Council Kevin Bott has drafted a response to that complaint, which I provided to the board tonight. Does not want you to discuss it, but if you do have any questions or comments, contact him or contact me, and I'll relay those to Kevin. He hopes to get the response out tomorrow. And it's my responsibility to, I'm responsible for the 40, 30 minutes posted timely, and especially executive session, which are my responsibility. I have the minutes in draft form, but they have not been submitted to the board for me, which will be done post case.
That's one of the reasons we needed the request for additional staff time because of the difficulty of prioritizing these items. We are, as I mentioned, we under unfunded mandates. We have a mandate to comply with the open meeting. And yet, we don't get additional fundings to be able to do that. There is a, well, two matters. One, Jane sent me an email where she had been sent an email to invite a member to the Climate Leadership Summit in North Andover, hosted by the Sierra Club, State Senator Bruce Maher, and is open exclusively to municipal level officials. And...
Government officials, I think you said.
I think it'd be great if I suggested to Jane that if she could attend that on behalf of the board, and if anybody else would like to be in touch with Jane. But I think it'd be nice to be at that. It's important. And then we also, James O'Reilly, who is a, I believe, let's see, Funding Inspector, had won all the issues and the problems as a result of the issues up in Andover, North Andover and Lawrence with the natural gas explosion. While doing his job here, also went and did an extraordinary job for an extraordinary amount of time up there. And we have a proposed letter to recognize and show our appreciation. I think it's the type of thing that creates goodwill to other communities and discussions about how we have tried to coordinate with other community services. And this letter is to thank him for doing so. And hopefully, there'll be a model for, I think we've had people go in there hurricanes and other things at other locations. So instead, really keep up that spirit and most appreciated what he did. So I think there is actually a motion in regards to this.
Okay. Okay. Yes, please. Move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit the letter of appreciation to Funding Inspector Jim O'Reilly, substantially distracted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now I...
Be right back for one second.
Yes.
I should talk, we should talk a little bit more about the Town Manager Search. You gave the update that we met with the consultants. And we should just mention the consultants are wanted to, the plan, this timeline plan is that in January that we all need to outreach activities to develop what is considered the community profile, the person which is this week with your meeting or with the chairs. the person which is this week with your meeting or with the chairs. They were, the job announcement will go out in January, and there, one of the requests from the consultants was that we give some considered plot to the salary, the upper salary, because it's usually posted with the job and with the community profile, so applicants know what they're looking at. So Mike and I both did some research of what the current salaries are, most recent hires in the neighbors, our neighboring communities where town managers have turned over, there's a range of salaries that are, you know, one, I think it was 185, 195, 211, these are the annual salaries for the new and incoming town managers. So I think it is, I think it would be reasonable for us to have as a, have as our range, something that says, in this job description, the committee will be, can talk about it too, but salary, salary below, to the lows 200s, so you're not specifying a single number, total compensation is negotiable based on qualifications and experience, because there may be other items of the compensation package that, you know, be negotiable in that range of salary. So just wanted you to hear what the other salary ranges are in their neighboring communities, to hear what, you know, to be aware of what we're thinking about for the town managers.
And if you have comments about that, get them to Alice or me, so we can work with a consultant to try that. Finalize that.
So, it says, right now it says salary to the low 200s, so we're not saying, give it a concrete number, but we can, we could say, give a salary number of 200, if somebody comes in that says, I just can't take it from under 205, and it's our top candidate, we do have the flexibility of, say, of okaying above that 200 number, so we, I think we'll meet tomorrow night, we'll talk about it with the Town Manager Search Committee, and we'll talk about it with consultants, and see whether, you know, we need an absolute number, or can we stay in the low 200s, but negotiable. And this is the upper range, upper.
That's helpful, I think.
Thanks.
In other words, at one point, so the discussion of whether this discussion could be held, an executive session is determined it was not appropriate to be held an executive session, so.
Does it have negotiating individuals' salary?
Yeah, we can, in executive session, we can discuss.
What, the final, when we're negotiating. I think we're ready for committee appointments.
Okay.
There are no nominations, so.
So we, I move to appoint Susan, I was going to, I believe practice his last name, but he already heard pronouncing, move to appoint Susan Malozenic of 392 Border Road to the West Concord Advisory Committee for term to expire May 31st, 2021. Carol Wayland of 6 Abbott Lane, number 6, to the Concord Center Cultural District for term to expire May 31st, 2021. Dina Whitfield of 60 Center Woods End Road to the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee for an unexpired term to expire May 31st, 2019.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. How this next one will be handled.
The board, photograph.
If they want to do this now, we could do it another time.
I dressed up for here.
Sorry.
You got a camera?
Should, do we want to adjourn?
He doesn't recommend that you adjourn.
We should adjourn this year, unless there are, we said there were no public comments back then. Okay, so, I think it's appropriate to adjourn, why weren't we setting up for an executive session?
Okay, I would agree.
Adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation, as Mr. Book wrote, and adjourn to executive session following a photograph for the purposes of discussing litigation, and to not reconvene an open session. The executive session is needed to protect strategy discussion affecting negotiations on the state of matter of litigation, and that doing so in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on any litigation, on any litigation position on the public body on the, on the matter of Mr. Book wrote the paper.
Second.
Second.
And?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we all need to do this by?
I thought it was a roll call.
Roll call. Do we do a roll call?
Yes.
All right? Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you all for coming.